Okay, we are live streaming to the Facebook page. We are recording, the meeting is yours.
All right. Thank you all so much for joining. Before we hand things over to the WPCA to Pete, I just want to do some quick housekeeping, just as a reminder to anyone on the line. If you want to mute yourself, either on the computer or the phone, whenever you're not speaking, that's much appreciated. And also, whenever you are speaking, just say your name first, both for note-taking purposes and for anyone listening in from the public. With that, I'll hand it over to the WPCA to Pete, so you can start by doing a roll call and calling your WPCA partners to order. Thank you.
Sure can. Roll call of WPCA members and Pete Bellistrassi present. Lynn Young?
Present.
Jim?
Jim Petroski here.
I know Chairman can't make it, and I guess Chuck isn't here either, so we do have a quorum with the three of us. So you move on.
Do you want to just officially call your meeting to order?
Oh, yeah, I called the meeting to order, and then we just had the roll call, so.
Perfect, thank you. Now, we'll also call the June 3, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. June Strunk, are you on?
Yes, I am, I'm here.
Thank you. Deb Downey?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, thank you. Now, over to the Board of Finance.
Okay, we will call the meeting of the Board, especially the Board of Finance to order, and I will go through the role of the Board of Finance members. Myself, Tom O'Brien is here. Glenn Freshman?
Here.
Mike Fauerbach?
Here.
Lynn Young? Deb Norman? Bob Statchen?
Here.
Dave Motherway?
Here.
Okay, we're all present and accounted for, and I know that Jim Sullivan, the Director of Finance, is on the line with us as well for representing the Board of Finance and the town. I will now turn it over back over to the WPCA.
Okay, before I call on Doug, I'd like to start off by saying that I think every one of you who's Board of Finance and Board of Selectwoman have received a letter from Doug explaining kind of what we need, why we're seeking a $10 million bond. And then, the other thing I'd like to bring out after Doug completes his presentation or his remarks, I will call on members of the WPCA, if they want to say, add anything to what Doug said or any comments, and then following that, I'll ask that anybody from the Board of Selectwoman or the Board of Finance has any questions of Doug, you can answer them. So at this time, I'd like to call on WPCA Director Doug Middleton to explain what we need and give an overview and background of the situation. So Doug, you're on.
Thank you, Peter. Good evening, everybody. For the record, I am Doug Middleton, Executive Director of the WPCA. I'd first like to thank everybody for their time this evening to allow us to provide you with the information and the reasons for our request that the town pursue a $10 million bond for the purpose of reinvestment into the Stonington Sewer System. For those of you who might remember that we bonded back in 2010, we borrowed $18 million for a wastewater facility upgrades, who might also be thinking, another bond? That's understandable, I understand. I will make an effort to clarify the need for the bond shortly, but I believe there is also a need to understand the current financial challenges within the WPCA. Despite the repeated increases in our sewer fees over the last five years, the WPCA operating budget has been losing money each year. The reason is, in no small part, because we happen to be one of the very few communities in the country that have three separate treatment facilities to operate within our community. We have managed to keep our operating budget in the black so far because of the surplus in our cash reserves within that operating account, but this year has seen a significant drop in that month's cost of contract operations, has gone up significantly, driven largely from our increased power usage and the cost of electricity. The newer Mystic process has proved much more expensive to operate, and the switch from chlorine for disinfection to UV light at all three facilities, although environmentally friendlier, is much more expensive to operate and requires a stock of expensive parts. I bring this up to allow an understanding that at this time and in the foreseeable future, given our current revenues, we can barely manage to support our operational costs, let alone fund our needed capital expenditures. Going back to the past bond, the $18 million that was borrowed in 2010 was spent to renovate and modernize the Mystic facility. A majority of those funds were spent at that facility with limited modifications made at the Poggettuck and Borough facilities, which included a change in the disinfection systems to UV light, and the installation of more efficient air blower systems for the biological processes. No funding within the $18 million was allocated for Poggettuck or the Borough facilities other than those two improvements, and no funding was allocated for 17 pumping stations that WPCA operates. Fortunately, when the project at Mystic was completed, there was approximately $650,000 remaining from that bond. Over the past three years, the WPCA has been using this remaining balance to pay for the unexpected replacements and repairs. Examples are the airline replacement at Poggettuck, which was corroded beyond repair and replaced at a cost of $219,000; replacement of 300 feet of collapsed sewer on Home Street at a cost of $125,000; a generator replacement at White Rock Pump Station for $65,000, and numerous other repairs, replacements as they have come up. Although there is a line item within our yearly budget called MRR, which was increased from $75,000 to $150,000 a few years ago, to fund repairs or replacements, it was not meant to cover items that would be deemed capital in nature. So the WPCA has been using the balance of the 2010 bond coupled with the MRR account to fund these repairs. Those remaining funds from the 2010 bond are now nearly depleted, and looking forward, we are faced with some serious and expensive repair replacement projects. One of these is the secondary clarifiers at the Poggettuck facility, which was not even on our radar as a problem as late as November of 2019. We are currently operating on one of our two units, which is in marginal condition, and failure is imminent. The other unit is already out of service. If we lose the existing unit, we will violate our permit and do environmental harm to the Poggettuck River. Our estimate of the cost for this one project is over $450,000. Another project that can't be delayed is the River Road Pump Station. River Road is a two-pump station, the main pumping station for the Poggettuck facility, and eventually handles all the flows in the Poggettuck sewer shed. It has been years since either of these pumps have been dismantled or inspected, the reason for this being that both pumps are needed during peak flow times during the day, making it nearly impossible for us to remove one for service. A third pump has to be purchased and installed at the station, and then one by one, the existing pumps will be sent out, rebuilt, or if required, replaced. Costs are expected to be $225,000. To add the third pump, repairs to the existing pumps are additional to that figure. There are other pump stations that need immediate work to remain operation and reliable, with a cost estimate of $466,000 during the first year of our program. The rest of the required work at the pump stations and at the facilities is part of your package, and identifies our five-year program, the first year totaling $3,814,500. There is also an allocation in this bond request for future work that we foresee will be needed within the Mystic collection system when the INI study is complete, as well as updating the facility plan, which is now 14 years old. DEP recommends that this report should be updated every 10 years. This facility's plan is important because it provides a guidance and a plan for future needs and growth within the sewer system. The WPCA feels it's better to move forward with a bond rather than consistently return to the town with the burden of requests for large CIP projects each year for the foreseeable future. Also, in doing a bond, the money is available so that we can get some of this work done as larger combined projects, reducing the overall engineering cost, getting better pricing for this work, and while quickly restoring our sewer system back to the robust and reliable system capable of supporting the existing and future needs that the community serve. In conclusion, until recently, the WPCA has largely stayed out of the town CIP budgeting process. Last year, it was necessary for the WPCA to request $1.9 million due to increased flows entering the Mystic facility beyond our permitted levels, resulting in a sewer mortuary in for Mystic. It also forced us to submit a plan to DEP on how we will deal with the increasing flows. Our plan, as identified within our facilities report, is to revive the diversion line that currently exists between Mystic and the Borough facility. Last year, $1.6 million from CIP was earmarked for the repairs to that existing interconnection. This will allow for us to send flows from Mystic to the underutilized Borough facility. An additional $300,000 was also allotted in the CIP request for the first stage of the INI study, otherwise known as inflow and infiltration, to see if we can identify where and how all this additional flow we are seeing at the Mystic facility is finding its way into the sewer system. We have currently begun the INI study and are close to awarding a bid for the transmission line improvements. Prior to this CIP request, it has been at least 10 years since the WPCA has requested to receive CIP funding. With the issuance of this bond, we are hopeful that it will not be necessary for the WPCA to be part of the town's CIP program for several years. And that concludes my remarks this time.
Okay, thank you very much, Doug. We appreciate all you've done and what you're doing, and it's an excellent presentation of what our needs are. At this time, I'd like to ask Lynn or Jim, do you have any comments or anything you'd like to add to what Doug said?
Well, this is Lynn. The one thing I would say, if we can do the bond, we can finally get proactive, which is not something in my tenure on that board we've ever been able to be. We respond to emergencies as they occur. We have, a lot of our systems are supposed to be run with a duplicate system alongside of it. Much of that is not in place. We've just basically been putting mandates on things and responding to emergencies. Running three plants, 17 pump stations, and an antiquated collection system takes a lot of money. There's really no way around that, and so when Doug talks about the facilities plan, one thing that's going to arise in that is, how long should we maintain three separate point source plants versus moving to one plant? Because this $10 million bond will get us a period of time, but the stuff that we have is getting older and older, and if you were to add up all of the equipment we have, $10 million doesn't come close to replacing what could break very easily. We're running stuff so far past its useful life, it's kind of a miracle. So I would say that, and it will keep us out of SIP, and the town plug that comes to us every year, that's a different issue. That's for the operating expenses that we can't really pass on to users in its entirety yet, because if we do, we'll be priced so much higher than neighboring communities, we run the risk of driving business out. So, you know, the sewer system is in pretty dire straits. I think, Doug, why don't you repeat that last line of that memo I saw? We're not jumping for lifeboats yet, but it's getting pretty sporty.
Yeah, let's see if I can put my hands on that. I know you're... Anyway, Lynn, if you have it, if you'd read it, that'd be fine.
That's basically it, which is that we're not in the lifeboat yet, but it's getting pretty sporty. We're getting nervous, and the stuff, you know, the stuff that we have, a lot of it, a lot of the added expenses are coming from the state dictating different methods of doing things, like, you know, better cleaning methods that then result in much higher electricity costs for us and whatnot. They don't care about that part of it.
And this is...
I mean, I'm doing...
I'm sorry. This is Jim Petroski, wanted to add to Lynn's commentary. Just a little piece of history, I've been on the board for 20 years, and in the 2007 or so timeframe, our facilities plan did recommend the consolidation of the three wastewater treatment plants into one, and that was going to be in the $45 million range, and we did go public with that recommendation, but for a lot of reasons, it wasn't well-received at the time, and siding, and where would the single effluent source be, that type of thing, and both the candidates for first selectmen were opposed to it. So that's when we went to the $18 million Mystic upgrade to address the most critical immediate needs that had to be dealt with, but it left on the table much of the other original equipment from the other plants, some of which is 50 years old or so. And just one more quick thing about that is a data point, just in comparison, like if you look across the river to New London, the single New London plant serves New London, Waterford, East Lime, and now proportions of Old Lime. So, you know, we really are in a unique situation here, and it's catching up with us.
I would add one more thing to that, Jim, which is, in case you're wondering, you know, when we spent the $18 million and did that facilities plan, we expected to get 20 years of capacity out of Mystic. The footprint in Mystic is constrained, so we had to go to a brand-new technology and get special state permission to do it and whatnot in order to increase the size of the tankage without physically increasing the size of the tankage. But the reason, and in so doing, the amount of flow that was permitted to go into that plant was reduced by the state a little bit. But the reason that that $18 million improvement has not lasted us that long in Mystic, and why we have to do or redo the diversion to the Borough, is because when the facilities plan was done, from the time you do that, to the time you get approval, to the time you bond and get a shovel in the ground, and all of that is years. And in the period of time that we were waiting for that, the groundwater table rose pretty significantly, and so we started to get all of this infiltration into the sewer pipes, and we started to get flows that we couldn't possibly have anticipated. So that's why that $18 million didn't go for a particularly long time. So I think it's important to note that, too. And Deb Downey, you might know more about that part than I do, but that is where we think the flow is coming from.
No, this is Deb Downey. Yeah, I agree with you, Lynn, and having been on the WPCA a few years, you're kind of telling me things I've heard before, but yes, I do agree.
This is Chuck Sheen. I've only been on the commission, the WPCA, for a few months, most of which we've been conducting virtual meetings, so not many people know who I am. And while I've only been on the commission a few months, I've been working in this industry for a long time, and served as the CEO for one of the state's, if not the state's, largest wastewater treatment bureau, the MDC in Hartford. And when I was brought into the MDC, it was because the district had, the MDC had essentially not dealt with some very similar problems, which were resulting in frequent overflows into the stormwater system, which were resulting in combined sewage flows into a bunch of tributaries in Hartford, not exactly the same situation we have here, but it could easily occur if some of these problems manifest themselves more seriously. So while I was at the MDC, we were served with a huge notice of violation from both EPA and DEEP. I don't say this to scare you, I say it because I lived through an agency that didn't perform upgrades on a timely basis, and while I wasn't there to participate in the problem evolving, I was brought in to solve it. And it all began with a $750,000 fine, and us having to negotiate with a federal judge and a state judge to sign two consent decrees to implement a $2.4 billion program, which we essentially had to prepare under directs. And I just caution everyone, and use this as an example, that if you don't react, and if there's a problem, if you don't react and you don't maintain these systems, and there's a problem, you just don't continue to ignore it. The regulators step in, and that's EPA and DEEP, and they essentially take over, and you don't have any latitude in the situation because you're compelled by court orders to do things. And while you still have to get referendums passed, if they don't pass, a federal judge directs the town to do it, and you have to do it anyway. So autonomy is a great thing, and we should make these decisions in the most informed way we can, but we should bear in mind that if we don't make them and we don't continue to manage the system in a prudent way ourselves, the system will be taken over by the feds and the state, and they dictate it, and it's never the most economical solution. In the MDC's case, it's a $2.4 billion project, and it's totally changed the user fees for everyone in the capital region. So I urge everyone to think about this, it's a lot of money, but we have our autonomy, we can make these decisions in an informed way, everyone should be aware of what we're using this money for, but we ought to make a decision to authorize money for maintenance, because without it, you're going to lose your autonomy. I didn't answer here earlier, I was having trouble connecting, so just indicate that I was here from the beginning, thank you.
I would say one more thing to that. We've already been, you know, we're small, we're a small town, we're not Hartford, obviously, but we've already been in that position because we had a consent decree, which led to a seven-plus million dollar bonding expense to put the infrastructure under Route 1, which we're going to use again for the diversion, but from the DEP's perspective, that was always a temporary measure, and so we were still operating on our consent decree, which led to the $18 million bond for Mystic. So, you know, I don't think we were ever polluting, so I don't think we had that problem. We didn't have the EPA breathing down our necks, but we did have deep then, which is what prompted those two bonds. So our situation now is that we are that much, the sewer system and its equipment is that much older, and we are that much closer to having a failure. And it could be for sections of town, so if something big enough goes wrong, you know, it could be a section of town or hotels or something like that can't flush or can't do something, that would qualify as a disaster. So, you know, I would say that, and that brings us to the timing of why we, you know, are talking about needing the bond now. And that's the next thing about this, which is that, you know, you don't go to Home Depot and buy a pump. You have to order these things, they have to be engineered, they have to be built, they take, in some cases, it can take months. Doug can tell us, Doug, what was that, how long did it take us to get the airline fixed in Poggettuck? Did we lose you?
I muted myself. I'm here. Yeah, Lynn, that probably took us over a year by the time we actually had a new airline. We ran it above ground this time, abandoned the one in place that was leaking, and actually ended up being a very good job, but it just took longer, much longer than we anticipated. And when we talk about the Poggettuck clarifiers, you know, I was out for surgery in December, and Tom Gilligan was in my place, and we authorized beta engineering to do a right specification for that repair. I am still waiting for that repair, that specification, and I've been promised and promised, but as soon as we get it, which the latest promise has been this week, we will want to go out to bid on that, and not to say that we're going to have to pay for that upfront, but it would be nice to start that project.
We'd have to know where we get the money.
What's that?
We'd have to know where we get the money before bidding, so, but wasn't there something about, there was a six-month lead time for some of that equipment?
At least a six-month, and now with COVID-19, that could be further out there. That's my concern with the project we're about to award for the diversion, how long the lead times are going to be on the equipment that they need. You're right in the fact that, I don't know why it takes so long for us to get products. Nobody keeps anything on the shelf anymore because, I guess, of inventory taxes or whatever, but yes, it becomes a problem. That's why we like to keep the duplicity in our SIPs systems, because we know that we can't just turn around and fix something overnight. So it's very important that when you have duplicate pumps, that both of them are operational, and the emergency starts when one goes down. We're already to that point with those clarifiers in Poggettuck, and if the other one fails tomorrow, we will be in violation, we will have to scramble to rent temporary clarifiers, which, because you're doing everything fast and you can't get pricing, you get hit with some excessive fees, and that's my concern, and that's why we're trying to push this forward. But that's not the only issue, you know, I explained about River Road, but there are numerous pump stations where the guide rails where we lift the pumps up and down have been rotted for years, and it's time to start fixing this stuff, and by doing this, we can start to look at standardizing some of our equipment. We can't standardize all because our pump stations are all different, have different flow characteristics, but we can start to standardize on things like new SCADA, and we've kind of selected a much cheaper way to go with SCADA that will get rid of, whatever we call the SCADA people in, it's a $2,000 or $3,000 bill. We're trying to eliminate that with a system that our guys can work on, a little bit different, but I think it will work for us, but also standardizing the type of controls that we use, so that the guys are not dealing with different controls every time they go to a different pump station. So all that will accumulate, if we get this bond money, when we start redoing these stations, we're going to try and standardize how we do them, and also, one of the big components of the pump station is I'd like to install bypass connections. I did this in there against Rhode Island because we were prone to hurricanes, and when we got a hurricane, we could lose power for a week or more. And what this allows us to do is if you lose power and your standby generator goes down or your pumps get flooded, whatever, you can pull up to that station with a portable pump, pump that station down, and move on to the next location and keep the system working even through a worse situation such as a bad hurricane.
The other thing that we should probably mention is that if we do the bond, we'll be able to return the million dollars, or close to a million dollars of SIP in the budget we just approved for the next year.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, having lived through the attempt to build one plant, and siding was the critical issue at that time, that is a conversation that needs to be had. We're going to have to build a literal groundswell of support to do it, but right now, I think passing this bond is absolutely imperative.
So one thing it pays to consider is if you add the $18 million bond, the $3 million we did for odor control for three different plants, all of the town plugs over the years, the various SIP withdrawals, monies and whatnot that have been spent out of our so-called reserve, which is now barely at, you know, a going concern level if this were a preparation, barely. If you add all that up, you know, in the last like 15 or so years, we're pushing $30 million without this bond. So the next part of this conversation, really, or soon, really needs to be about planning a little further ahead, maybe five years or something down the road, and beginning the process for rationalizing the system we have here, because this, you know, it's only getting older, right? So we're just going to keep having to come back to taxpayers for something that's, you know, never going to be any better. know, never going to be any better.
Lynn, Mike Farback, just to, to that point, I mean, I'm hearing two things loud, loud and clear here from the WPCA representatives. One is, you know, our, our back is against the wall. We have infrastructure that's failing, that's going to continue to fail, that inaction's not an option here, you know, at this point. And, and, and I get that. But the, the other thing I'm hearing from, from folks as well is, is that, that the three, the three, the infrastructure that we have at, at present with, with three treatment facilities just is not, not sustainable, not efficient, and that, that needs to be addressed. I guess my question is, is, is there money in this, this proposed allocation to, to do that work, to do that study, to hire, hire an external firm, you know, to come in and really lay out the, the plant consolidation options?
Yeah, that's, that's what Doug meant by the facilities plan being a part of this. That's not an inexpensive endeavor, which we know from last time. So that's part of what we, we think we're going to have to spend money on because the one we have now is 14 years old. The state's not pushing on this yet, but they might because we're going to be doing a diversion again from one sewer district to another. And in any event, it's past, it's, it's past due, but mostly it's past due for our own taxpayers.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, right.
Hang on one second, Mike, because the problem I got here is that we're having a three-board meeting. And so I think the, the way we got to do it is when WPCA is done, I believe we're going to turn it to, to selectmen first, and then the Board of Finance will come after that. So if Board of Finance can hold your questions for right now, I, it's a Zoom meeting, it's, or WebEx, it's a little hard to do, but I, I just don't want to get us too far finance. I gotta, we gotta keep some quorum here.
This is, this is Chuck Shand again from the WPCA. To the point that, that Mr. Farback raised, in, in the next study of, of a single plant, amongst all the options that are viewed, we have to view the do-nothing option as, as an option as well, and what that will cost over the long term. And I think we should focus on that just as much as we focus on the, on the single plant option, because these costs, these costs are going to really go up logarithmically. And they could conceivably go up within this five-year period. This is what Doug can estimate. This is not necessarily what is going to play out over the next five years. There could be, there, and I know I sound like the prophet of doom here, and I, I guess that's what I do sound like, but, but we, we, this five-year plan is, is the best five-year plan that anybody could put together, and I, I give him a lot of credit for, for, you know, the detailed analysis that he did to put it together. But that's not to say that some, there couldn't be a major failure in addition to this that we have to deal with as an emergency. But to Mr. Farback's point, and it's a very good one, the, the do-nothing alternative in this study has to be explored with the same diligence as the single plant study. If there were issues that came out of that single, last single plant study, like odor control around the one plant location that, that, you know, was the prime option, then odor control should be studied and that should be focused upon. But, but the do-nothing alternative has to be explored, and the cost of it has to be estimated right alongside of the, the option of, of going to a single plant. Thank you.
Yes, Lynn, again, that's absolutely true, and we did that in the last facilities plan. And, you know, it, it looked more attractive back then because we're going back, you know, really from the beginning of that thing, almost 20 years. And 20 years in the world of equipment and concrete and other stuff is a very long time, not to mention the fact that through that period of time, our requirements for, for cleaning the sewage got stricter and stricter. So, so, you know, the thing is, Mike, just to go back to the thing you were saying here is, if we, if we, if we don't spend the $10 million, we know we're going to have some problems. So it's not like it's an option because we can wait and do a facilities plan and get, you know, something done that way. And it's also not money that's badly spent because a large chunk of it's going to be on the collection system, which isn't going to change. So, you know, it's, it's kind of like that. And then we may not get approval, you know, for whatever the facilities plan dictates. And, you know, the only thing that we know for sure about that is that the cost that we saw 15 years ago isn't going to look anything like it's going to cost now. So we have to deal with what we have in hand, or we will wind up with permit violations, and that will be extremely unpleasant for everyone.
Thanks. So if it works for everybody, I think on the Board of Selectmen side, we'll probably have less questions, just since June was on the Board of Finance for a long time, Deb was on the WPCA, and I feel like I've been living sewer talk for the past couple months. So maybe if it works for everybody, we'll, we'll do our segment, and then we'll hand it back over to the Board of Finance for follow-up questions. Take silence as a good sign. Thank you. So maybe before making an official motion for the Board of Selectmen to consider, I, I do want to address one thing that we, we've sort of touched on, but I just want to make it really clear, kind of at least my thinking on the subject. So I think we're kind of in a position that no one really wants to be in, but it is, in fact, the situation we're in. The sewers, as we've heard, are time-sensitive, critical need, and they impact residents' everyday lives. They also help us attract new investment. And as was also touched on, they're important for our local waterways, ranging from recreation to our fishing community. I think it's difficult for representatives in a town, having a town meeting form of government, to deal confidently and comfortably with the new procedures that are at our disposal because of COVID. I don't think anyone here takes this discussion or decision lightly. The taxpayers and stone engine themselves did not vote for us with the understanding that we would be making such decisions. But as elected leaders on both the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, I know we have a responsibility to conduct business and protect our community during an emergency of unique character and of uncertain duration. The governor gave us new rules that can be used with matters of public importance such as this. With them, he also put into place procedures that are designed to be substitutes for the way action is taken at town meeting and the way people participate. Through a public hearing, I believe we'll still be able to consult the electorate and receive their comments before acting. And it's with that thought that I'd like to put forward a motion to the Board of Selectmen to support the WPCA recommendation to hold a public hearing on the $10 million sewer infrastructure bond that we were just discussing. Do I hear a motion?
This is Debbie Downey, so moved.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
This is June Strunk, I second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do you guys want to ask any questions to the WPCA or to, as Tim noted, Jim Sullivan, who's also on the line?
Sure. Deb, I'll go first. Okay, so I do want to, I do want to point out that Lynn made a very, very important point, which I think got lost in some of the discussion leading up to this, was that most of the cost is on the collection system. And if we go to a one-plant system, the collection system's still going to be the same. So it's not as if this money's going to be wasted, like spent and then taken down because we're going to go to one plant at some point in the future instead of the three. So I do want to, I do want to really emphasize that, that that's a really important point that the, the public needs to know about. Secondly is that, you know, I look at our finances and our bond debt. I do want to, I, I, I know that Jim has put together an estimate as if this bond goes through, or when bond goes through, what it'll mean to the average household. And I, I know that he did do an analysis, has that, you know, the little house analysis. And it's about $53,000, $53, $53 per home that has a market value of about $315,000. So, and that's just, you know, that's just the first year that the bond is there because we do have debt. I mean, I think we are at the peak of our bonding debt right now due to the schools. And, and so it's starting to decline. So I think we're in a good position really to take on this debt, much needed, you know, and it's a much-needed bond for these, these critical repairs. But, but I just wanted, I just wanted to say that. So it might be an initial pump, an initial bump up in our debt requirement, in our taxes, in the mill rate, but then we've got bonds coming off that are retiring. So, so anyways, so I don't really have a question or so. You know, I've read enough about this, I just have, I just have those comments to add.
Thank you, June. Anything from your side?
I just really actually, I want to say Doug, Lynn, Chuck, you guys did a great job explaining things. I, I, going into this, I had a couple of questions. You answered all of them, even before I asked them. I just want to kind of make a comment that I have as a takeaway that, you know, for people to look at this, we're not just benefiting the sewer users and development, this is really critical for environmental quality and for all the businesses and residents in our town, for the rivers. You know, we're looking at the entire town. It's not just one part of town. There's three different plants. So I do think it's very important, and I thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, guys. It was very thorough. So with no, I think no further discussion for at this point, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Devin, June, both aye, I'm an aye, so the motion carries. Thank you. So Tim, now over to the Board of Finance. I'm sure you guys will have some more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. I will open up the floor to any Board of Finance member. I'd remind you to please identify yourself before you ask a question, and we'll try and, I'll try and keep questions from overlapping here. So I'll open it up this time.
I just have something else to say. It's Lynn. And that's this, you know, rates are really cooperative right now. The municipal bond market is open for business. The governor's order with respect to the referendum, you know, is for August 20th, which could turn out to be a lifetime from now. And if we did that, you know, even if we do a bond, you know, if we decide to do a bond next, next week, we're not really looking at having funds in hand until July. So if it were, you know, if, if something happens that derails it in August, we're going to be in trouble because we know we have things we need to fix. The thing with the, the clarifiers in Poggettuck wasn't even on our radar. You know, that checked out okay just about a year ago. So I'm just speaking now to timing and, and cost because rates are good, and there's still market appetite for municipal issuances.
And I guess I should go back and follow proper procedure, which I really didn't. So can I get a motion from a Board of Finance member, same as what Danielle made the motion to support the WPCA, to bringing this to a, as public of a meeting and input as we can, given the certain circumstances?
So moved. Bob Statchen.
Bob Statchen with the motion. Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second, Lynn Frishman.
Lynn Frishman, thank you. Now we'll continue discussion. Any further questions that Board of Finance members have for WPCA? The one thing that I will, I will mention to Board of Finance members and to other, and to other members who are on the, on the call now, one of the things that I am reluctant to do is to put more things in this bond, other than the, the sewers, because bonds are typically written, as we saw with the, with the school bonds that came out, that have definite milestones and, and metrics that you measure against. And this is a pretty well-defined thing that I would not want to put too much else in. It doesn't preclude us from doing other things. However, I, I don't want to get it confused with other items that might be good for bonding, just in that it, it keeps it cleaner and it's, and it can be more palatable to the bond issuance. So, go ahead, Mr. Frishman.
I would support recommending that the Board of Selectmen go forth and have bonding resolutions prepared to support the WPCA's bond. And then they'll be bringing them back to us for a recommendation up or down. But I think we definitely have to go forward with this bond. And now is the time to do it. Rates are historically low, and I think we have to act because at any point in time from now to next week, a major failure could occur.
I would say the major failure could occur not only in the sewer system, but also the bond market.
It's Mike Farback, just one, one comment, one question. So just wrapping up, on what I was, or following up on what I was stating earlier, you know, again, I, I think I'd be, be more comfortable knowing that included somewhere in this $10 million are funds to, to, to do a study on the plant consolidation option. I mean, it sounds like that really is something that, that needs to be pursued. I, I can appreciate that lots of challenges with that. But, but, but it, it sounds like, you know, we, we need a better long, long, long-term solution here. So, you know, again, it would be, be good to know that that, that is the intention of the WPCA. So that was, that was, I guess, my first comment. And then my, my question is, is about bonding for 10 million versus bonding for 9 million. So we, we did set aside a million dollars in next fiscal year's budget, knowing that we have, you know, urgent needs and that something could fail at any time, as we've heard from multiple people. And Lynn even commented that if we got the 10 million, we could return, you know, the 1 million. But, but, but I'm just trying to get my head around, if, if, if that's the case, if we've already got the 1 million secured, what, why not bond for now an additional nine and we total 10? So I, I get that, you know, money's short right now, and, and we're dealing with very, very low rates, but can someone help me maybe a little bit on, on 10 million versus 9 million?
I can tell you what my thinking is. It's Lynn. It's just this, there's a lot of things in town that are old. So if we could return a million back to SIP or to fund balance to be deployed as necessary for SIP, without having to go through the motions of a bond, seems to me like that might be prudent. You know, forget, if we wind up with a roof failure or the air conditioners for the schools or, you know, whatever it turns out to be, that was my only reason for doing it because it was a way to not fold some of those things into the bond itself since.
I consider it never young.
Although recognizing, you know, we have limits, right? I mean, how much we can redeploy, right?
I don't think in SIP we do, do we, Tim? If it's in a, if, we can just, it's like a line item transfer, right?
That's correct.
That's correct. Yeah, it's already in SIP, so it would just be reallocated to a different SIP project, and then the project just has to have a minimum of $1 in the line item.
Can I ask, related to Mike's question, on the, the, the bond request update is of May 28th, the Excel sheet actually comes out with a 10.8 number. So now we're talking 9, 10, or 11. I'm, I'm wondering kind of how that, how, how that differentiates in there. I have another question after that, but, but that's directly related to Mike's comment.
I don't understand your, what are you saying, Bob?
There was an Excel sheet that went out saying there's a, the, the total bond request summary is 10.807500. And so we keep talking about 10 million, and I'm just wondering, there's another 800,000 there. And, and so I'm just wondering, that 800,000, I, I had kind of thought maybe that was the million, and now Mike's question. So I'm just trying to clarify what the number is and, and why that's 10.8.
Well, WPCA is asking for 10, so Jim Sullivan could tell us where the other.
Doug sent that out, so maybe Doug could clarify.
I can tell you, when I redid the numbers and I went through and gave it a, a third or fourth perusal, that's where the numbers came up. And we're not, I'm looking for the 10 million. I mean, I, I'm not looking for the 10.8, even though that's where the numbers ended up. I, I think that we, we're, we're more than happy with the $10 million at this point.
And I guess, unless, Mike, are you, are you all set, Mike? I don't want to.
Sorry, go ahead, Bob. Yeah.
I guess my, my comment on this is just my, 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 I support this, and I, and I appreciate all the work that everyone's done on it, and the expertise that you, you all bring to it is, is very impressive. And as usual, we're fortunate to have that in this, in this town. My concern is, one of my concerns is with the, the fact that, that if this does get approved, it won't go to the, it won't go to the voters. And so I think we have a, an increased responsibility for due diligence as far as understanding the transaction. And that's, you know, the, the 10.8 versus 10 million kind of leads to that sort of, I, I think we need to, I would like to get a better understanding of sort of, is this Ben, is this all an internal assessment? Did we hire outside contractors to make an estimate of this is how much the project is going to cost? If we do have an outside report, is that something that the Board of Finance would be able to review, again, to be able to say, we did our due diligence, we know it's not going to the voters, but I'm, I'm, you know, just to add to the comfort. And I have great comfort in it, and I think this is an. And I have great comfort in it, and I think this is an important one. But I, I also think it's important for it to be very transparent and, and the, the data and the analysis behind having this, to, to be very open and public and available why we're asking, why we're asking for, for this amount and what we, what we intend to do.
I think in our hearing, we will go through a lot of that next week, but getting, it's very expensive to go out and hire somebody to do that sort of analysis. Okay? We don't have the money to do that. We need the bond to get, to do even that. Where, where our stuff comes from is from stuff that we know right now that's broken, but also from kind of very constant discussions with the operators of the plants. So Doug, in our public hearing next week, what do you think in addition, in terms of additional information we can provide?
Well, I certainly can go through, you know, this, it may make this at the 10 million mark, so there won't be any confusion there. There are a lot of estimates that I can't foresee, and that is what the INI study is going to reveal, how much work will need to be done to the collection system, how much load hanging through, how much bang we're going to get for the dollars that we spent to remove that INI. Part of, of my analysis was to look at the burl collection system because the burl collection is also known for having excessive INI issue. It has never been a problem because even though the flows may skyrocket during a rainstorm at the burl, because they're, they're running at such a low number compared to their permit, it doesn't matter. But as we add, and it will take a couple of years, maybe even three years before we're putting 300,000 gallons a day over to the burl, we may have to do an INI study there to figure out what's going, to avoid another problem. But that's, that's an assumption. But I'm trying to encompass this thing so that we're not coming back to you in a couple of years saying, we need, we need more, we need more. So I tried to look at everything based on some of the pricing, like for the clarifiers, I have that in hand already, because we're working on the project, River Road, we're working that project. So I have estimates. I have a kind of a history of, of being in this business for more years than I like to admit, where I kind of have a, a ballpark figure of where things are going to land. So, and like Lynn says, it's very costly and time-consuming to hire someone to do these estimates for, and they end up really just being estimates anyway, even with an engineering firm, unless you, you know, you go out for pricing. And we, and we do that. We do that with all the projects that we do. We don't go out to bid, but we, we get multiple prices on any projects that we do.
Doug, this is Jim, Jim Petrowski. Yeah, I think just saying that, I mean, I think we would be able to support the public hearing by explaining, like, the cost of pumps were developed, you know, for our estimate based upon, you know, similar equipment and the work that we've done, you know, over the last 10 years, that we have a lot of information about, you know, what a category of equipment costs and, you know, what the installation is. So, I mean, just to make it clear to people that it's not just rolling the dice, you know, it's, it's, it's based on information. And then, okay, there's some assumptions with that, but it, but it's, it's baseline in, in reality.
But I'd also, I'd also add, Tim O'Brien here, I'd also add that much like when the schools went out to bond, we had pretty good estimates of what it was, but they were estimates. And then the K-12 Building Committee constantly came back to the Board of Finance to get approval for line item expenditures and that, or bid waivers for the projects as they were doing it, so that there is an oversight that happens collaboratively between the two boards. That would happen in this case as well, moving forward. So there is still continued oversight. It's not like we're just turning over 10 million to the WPCA and hoping it goes well. So that's been well documented and followed.
We'd be thrilled if we didn't need it all.
And, and so just to, just to follow up, I mean, and, and again, I'm comfortable with, with the expertise of the WPCA, but basically this is an internal assessment then of what the needs are and, and based on the expertise of the WPCA and, and a response to that. And, and the, and the proposal that's going to be set forth at the, at the public hearing is, again, is an internal. And I think we have the expertise to do it. I just want to clearly understand how we've come to, to this amount that, that we are, we're recommending, and not only the amount, but also the, the project itself and the efficacy of, of the project itself.
I, I think, let me, this, Tim O'Brien, again, let me just jump in real quick, because for the years I've been on the Board of Finance and Mr. Freshman can jump in as well, this has been an ongoing concern and an ongoing need that's been addressed every year. And it's a question of when we had enough flexibility to get a bond together and get it out, because the schools did take some priority there and that locked up some of our stuff. But this has been an ongoing study that has been done by the WPCA and by Doug, once he was here too, to keep continually identifying what, what they need and what they would need for a bigger bonding project while we try and band-aid it together with SIP, what was really failing considerably before the other bond could, ran out, before we could get to another bonding time. So it's not like we just came to this, and I can, I can say that for Doug, sorry to speak for you, Doug, but I can say that they have been doing this for every year that I've been on the, the Board of Finance and, and warning, a cautionary tale of it's coming down. We don't know when, but we're going to need to do something soon.
Well, it's been hidden because we've been, we've been using funds from the other bond. Okay? And you might remember that Chuck said that when these things start to take off, they're logarithmic. Well, you're seeing that now. We're starting to see that in SIP. So that's already happening. And so our best guess for the next five years is some kind of blended average between last year and this year for every single year, such that, you know, we can not only take care of the things that pop up that we don't anticipate, but try to be proactive about taking care of the things that we have on a spreadsheet, which we'll be discussing in the public hearing.
This is Chuck Sheehan again, and just to, to try to give Bob a little additional comfort level. These are budgetary estimates, and as Doug said, if, if an engineering firm had done them, they would have been on their stationery. It wouldn't have been done any different with any more diligence. Budgetary estimates are always based on a, a conditioned survey, a conditioned survey that's made by an experienced person like Doug. And then some due diligence to look at equipment and labor that it would take to, to, you know, make a reasonable repair. Until the scope of the improvement is, is later on defined, you cannot do an engineering estimate. So an engineering firm wouldn't approach this any different than Doug approached it, and maybe with, with probably even less due diligence. And the only thing that would be different is you would have a big bill associated with it. So these are budgetary estimates based on a reasonable level of due diligence to scope the project and come up with a, a budgetary cost to make the improvement. As Tim said, there's a follow-on process of due diligence whereby the scope is defined and, and there's a process to come up with an actual estimate before the project is actually procured. So, so there's a lot of due diligence between the budgetary estimate and the actual execution of the project. I don't think that if an engineering firm had done this study, other than the bill, we would be looking at any different numbers that we'd have any more confidence in than what Doug did. That's based on, on working in this business, and I've, I've been working in this business for 40 years. So I, I, I have confidence in, in what Doug did. I've looked at the details, and I don't think an engineering firm would have done as thorough a job.
Thank you. And, and again, and I, I have complete confidence, again, I think we have a very highly qualified board. I, I still am trying to figure out how Lynn got so much expertise in this when she talks about it. But, 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 but I, I have, but I, again, I just, I want to understand the process and I under, want to understand where, how we're, we're coming up with this. And, and again, I do, I do think it's a strong team. So I thank you. I appreciate the explanation.
Bob, your point, this is Chuck Sheehan again, and I'll, I'll just say this briefly. Your point is a very good one. Because it's an abbreviated process, the more transparency, the better. And I'm just trying to give you a comfort level that regardless of who performed this, it wouldn't have been done any different, and it wouldn't have been done with, with any greater care than what, what Doug did it. And that's a considerable amount and a considerable standard of care. So I, I just was trying to make that point, not trying to beat down your concern. I happen to agree with it.
I actually think if an outside agency or an outside firm came in to do it, the number would be higher because they would be probably focusing a little more than we are on two of our three plants. So there's that too. The other thing to bring up here is from the Board of Finance's perspective, you know, what this does to our debt ratios and whatnot, our bond rating and so on. And Jim Sullivan did a little analysis of that. So it looks as if it's, you know, we're a little bit over in terms of our own guidelines for debt, but shouldn't impact our bond rating.
Jim, are, Jim, are you on, on the call?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Do you want to give a quick synopsis of that spreadsheet you sent out?
Well, what I sent out was the, the usual calculation of the various bonding, bonding ratios we have that are used as guidelines as to whether or not to bond or consideration of what am I doing? And, you know, some of them are, you know, overall debt compared to grand list, debt, debt service, annual debt service compared to the, to the budget expenditures for that particular year. And, and that's really, that's, that's probably the biggest one, the ones that really jumps out the most is, you know, how much are we spending? Our, our guidelines, which are developed from GFOA best practices, which is the Governmental Financial Officers Association, is, shouldn't be greater than 10%. We did exceed that in fiscal year 18, 19. That was the first year the bond serviced it, I think, for the, for the, maybe the second year for the school projects. So for those, that year, this current year we're in and the coming year, we're, we're always going to be above 10%, between 10 and 11 and a half percent. And for fiscal '21, '22, we are about to drop down below 10. But if we add this bond in, this $10 million bond in, it'll, it'll keep us above that 10% threshold for '21, '22, and '22, '23, and then we'll come back down under 10 for '23, '24. And having said that, you know, I did speak with our financial advisor about, you know, what, just going, going back four months, three or four months ago, what an additional 10, 10 million dollar bond might do to our AAA rating. And he didn't think it was going to get much drag on it. He thought that when we got the rating, this past, this past bond go around, you know, those metrics are still in place. What I did ask him was, you know, that coupled with COVID-19 hitting, how might that have affected? He said, to date, no one with a AAA rating has been downgraded based on any COVID-19 drag. So it's affected people who are without AAA's ratings. They've, they've lost rating points because of that, but not anybody who was AAA rating going into that. So he, he felt at this point, COVID-19 at hand was the $10 million bond issue. We will probably retain our AAA rating at this point.
Thanks, Jim. No, that's good. Any other questions from Board of Finance members? Hearing none, I will, I'm going to do a roll call vote, just because six of us trying to vote at the same time is a little, little challenging. So we're going to vote on approval of the motion as submitted. So myself, Tim O'Brien, I will vote yea towards the approval. Glenn Freshman?
Excuse me for a second. Are we vote, I don't even know what the motion is.
Motion was to, to support the WPCA to take the, the bond to public meeting as best we can, the best public meeting they can, and be supportive of the 10 million. Sorry.
For the record, a public, a virtual public hearing.
Thank you, a virtual public hearing. I knew I needed to put another word in there. I just wasn't sure what it is. I was going to do virtual, but...
Thank you.
So to take it to a virtual public meeting for, to, in support of the $10 million bond. So Glenn Freshman, how do you vote? Glenn there, or am I still here?
You're here.
Glenn, are you still, are you on?
There he comes. There he comes.
Come on.
Okay.
I'm voting yes.
You're, you're a yea for that. Oh, thank you, Glenn. Mike Farabak?
Yes, I support.
Lynn Young?
I support it.
Deb Norman?
I support it.
Bob Statian?
Yay.
David Motherway?
Yay.
The motion unanimously passes. The Board of Finance is in support of the WPCA to go to a public hearing. And with that, I will turn the meeting back over to the WPCA.
I'd like to thank, thank the Board of, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance for supporting our bond for us. We certainly appreciate it. And as we go forward, if the bond is approved, I'd just say that, you know, it kind of holds us off for another five years, but in the meantime, it seems like most of the members of WPCA would go to one plant. So it gives us five years to make, you know, no plans for another plan or other things that could hold us over for hopefully the next 50 years. But again, thank you all for your support. And at this time, I'd like to have a motion for one of the WPCA members to have the WPCA conduct a public hearing on June 16th at 5:00 PM to discuss the details of the sewer bond. Anyone make that motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is it a second?
It's second, Jim Petrowski.
Well, the motion made in second, then is there any discussion on the motion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries aye. At this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Danielle to ask if there was any further, anything further before we adjourn.
Thank you so much. No, anything else from the Board of Selectmen or Board of Finance before we let the WPCA adjourn?
Yeah, I would say one thing. Sorry to always have something to say, but what I would say about this is that, you know, forget about COVID, and forget about the governor's executive orders and whatnot. We were talking about this, if you looked at our minutes before any of this hit, and we would be knocking on the door regardless. So we're well aware of the fact that, you know, our taxpayers are accustomed to and deserve the right to weigh in on this, but that and the current reality doesn't, doesn't really have much to do with the sort of emergency situations we're in.
I agree. Thank you. So I think it's up to the WPCA to adjourn, and then the, the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen can adjourn.
This is Pete. Do I hear a motion to adjourn for the WPCA?
Chuck Sheehan, motion to adjourn.
Is it a second?
Second. Lynn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks.
We're adjourned, Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Board of Finance is going to be adjourned as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye-bye, everyone. Good meeting.
Bye.
Bye.